Planning Board Workshop Meeting. First, I want to have everyone join me for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States.
The United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands.
One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Start out with a roll call vote for board members. Peter?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Nicole?
Here.
Brockel?
Here.
Bob?
Here.
Joan?
Here.
And I'll ask Ahmad? Okay. We got a full board. So let me read our standard statement. Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted on the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the Secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed, and we have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the town's bulletin board. And we've emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and have confirmation of the legal notices for any public hearings tonight have been properly published, although we have no public hearings tonight.
What's up?
All right, tonight's workshop is for Vassar and an institute to understand what changes they've had, and encourage everyone to listen and then offer your thoughts as we go around and try to get to some conclusion and move along.
I did want to just quickly mention, for those of you on the Zoom, if you could mute yourself, that would be appreciated. I can do it from here, and I'm actually going through and doing that now for those that haven't, but that would be helpful. And the chat function is not on for this meeting because it's primarily intended to be an opportunity for the planning board and the applicant to discuss the project. And so therefore, there's not a public comment component of this, but of course, you can always submit in writing any comments you have, and this project will be back on a planning board agenda at a future meeting. A public hearing will be continued and so forth.
Correct. All right. All right, thanks, Mike. So we're all anxious to see what changes Vassar is offering, and we'll move forward with their presentation.
Thank you. We really appreciate the board's time and making available this special meeting so we can have an opportunity to have a dialogue and work together on this. As you mentioned, we do have some proposed changes on the project, given the feedback and also some additional information to share, and just appreciate the opportunity to work through those with you and get some feedback. So I'm going to share.
All right. Yep, go ahead, Brian.
You see it?
Yep.
Yep.
I can see it on the meeting room now. Okay. So we've prepared some materials on about four topics: the lawn. We know that preservation of the lawn has been an important topic for the board and the community, so we wanted to share an update on that. Preservation of the history of Williams. The town board voted not designate Williams as a town historic landmark, but we have been continuing to explore ways in which we can preserve the history of the building, and so we want to talk about that and share some of those ideas with you. Enhancing community character. This has been part of the feedback that we're hearing, and we've been listening to from the community. So we have some proposed enhancements to parking, traffic calming measures, and some other information around community character that we'll share. And then, as part of the project, we are proposing a zoning text amendment, and at the last meeting, we didn't have a lot of time to talk about that, so we wanted to provide an opportunity to talk about any questions you might have about this, so I'll get to that. And we want this to be an open dialogue, so as we go through, please feel free to interrupt, ask questions, share your thoughts, so that we can just make sure that we're kind of communicating well.
All right, thanks, Brian.
With that, I will jump in, unless there are any questions?
Yep, we've forwarded your presentation.
Great, thanks. So preservation of the lawn. We have discussed the lawn and the importance of the open space and the activities that occur there, and we've agreed with that from the very beginning. It's why we've cited the building where we did, and it tucked into the hill and in the corner of the space to try and preserve as much of the open space as possible. And while we don't have any plans to build on this in the future, we've been a little hesitant to restrict future administrations just because of fear of the unknown and what may come, but we have listened to the feedback from the board and from the community, had a good conversation with our board, the board of the college, and we agree that this is an important open space for the community and are making the commitment as part of this project to preserve the remaining open space indefinitely. So we've talked a bit about what space is left available, and as I go to the next page, I don't know why that didn't come out very well, but you can see the space, essentially all of the Vassar property within the borders that is not part of the project would be built will be preserved indefinitely as part of this project.
That's a nice.
And we will put those in, you know, the appropriate documents for that.
All right, great. That's a nice offer.
Okay, so kick it over to Mary Ann to talk about preservation of the Williams history.
Thank you, Brian, and thanks, everybody, again, for this opportunity to have a dialogue, as Brian said, with all of you. It's an important moment for us. We know with the town board's decision not to designate Williams a town historic landmark that preserving the history of Williams remains important in many ways and to many of us. And so we just wanted to share with you some of the ideas we've had to date and also let you know that this is an open dialogue, and we can talk a little bit more about that around this question. So obviously, we have an agreement with the state Historic Preservation Office for several, you know, items, and they're listed here. We will be providing the state with a structured documentation package as requested and as required. We also are providing a photographic record of the building as part of that, again, as necessary by the state, and we are preserving and repurposing materials to the extent that's reasonable, again, as part of our agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office. In addition, we have several other things that we are considering and planning to do at this point in time, and as I mentioned, this is not an exhaustive list or nearly a final list. So one of the things we've done is to make some outreach to the Town Historic Preservation Commission and collaborate with them on their ideas around how we might preserve Williams' history. So we've begun that conversation, and we'll be taking that forward now. We are also reusing the roof slate material where possible and non-structural elements in a variety of ways, for example, as interior accessories perhaps or as elements within the landscaping. And our landscape architect has suggested a number of ways in which we can use slate in the landscape that are really quite creative and, I think, excellent opportunities for us. We will also be attempting to reclaim wood flooring where possible to use in select casework, unique pieces of casework or millwork within the project. We have contracted with a local artist to salvage items from Williams for an art installation or an art display that will be in the lobby of the project. This is an artist that has worked with the college before, and he does these, you know, really amazing kinds of installations that use material culture to tell a historical story as well as the current moment in time for an institution. So I think this is a really great way that we can, again, add some of Williams' history into the project. We have completed a digital scan of all buildings of Williams for a virtual 3D rendition of the buildings as they exist today. That's been completed, and we're looking at ways to recognize the history of Williams and its residents within the institute project. So this could be anything ranging from plaques to naming to, you know, other kinds of didactic materials that would recognize the history of Williams and its residents. As I say, this is not nearly exhaustive and is really a conversation that we will be moving forward with the Town Historic Preservation Commission to come up with some additional creative ideas.
Is that 3D scan similar to what was done for Notre Dame?
It's very similar. It's not quite as, I think, high-tech, but it's very similar in what it does provide. Ken can certainly speak to that.
It isn't the same laser technology that is there. This is more of a visual representation of what the building looks like rather than a fully computerized one that the public or anybody like that couldn't use or see. This is something where more of the public could walk through and visually see in and out of the rooms and see what they look like in that type of 3D scan, like a virtual walkthrough.
Yep. See some of that on Google Maps. All right, great.
So if there's no questions, I will turn it over to, I think, to Ken right now, just to talk a little bit about some of the parking changements and changes we're thinking about and the enhancement to community character. You know, as was mentioned, we've listened to both the planning board and to local residents, and we understand that the parking is a concern and is a question, and so we've tried to tackle some of those concerns with what you'll see here.
Good evening. So what you'll see on the screen in color is what is being proposed, and there's a red outline of what was in the most recent design that was in front of the town prior to the parking layout. Probably the most major shift here is the movement of the parking as well as the drive approximately 137 feet east to align better with Dean Lane to create a more of a T intersection with Dean Lane rather than this lane that comes down from alumni, as it is today, right into the side of a house across the street. The benefits of what we're doing is twofold. The daily traffic that will come in and out are further away from the residences, closer to the east, which will bring in and out of the Inn and Institute and go into the parking lot. One of the key components here is the parking management plan that we've submitted, reviewed, and went back and forth with the board still basically holds true. The same number of parking spaces, 60 spaces here, 60 spaces that was proposed before, not utilizing any of the on-street parking that is in that parking management plan. One of the other components is the lot, as it was proposed, in the northwest corner was about 127 feet from the nearest residence in that direction. We're now moving the actual edge of pavement to almost 260 feet away, so it's a substantial movement away from that area. The area seen green outside of the driveway to the left or west in that area there, that is grading in an onsite stormwater management practice that we're looking to put in there, which enables us to enhance the visual buffer between the project and the actual, the neighbors as well. We've created a kind of a six-to-eight-foot shoulder on the road as it comes down because that is slightly elevated. As we all know, the alumni rises, so that rises up to that direction. And that gives us ability to plant some vegetation up high, and then the stormwater practice is a little bit down lower, so that'll give us some more area to plant down low as well to further create a nicer, a nice buffer in that area along there. That's the main changes with regard to the two projects from there. I'm going to turn it over to Henry Thomas, one of the other partners in my firm, and we are looking at some of the on-street things we can do for College Avenue as well to enhance the community character.
Thank you, Ken. I've been engaged to spend some time looking at College Avenue and look at ways that we can start to address some of the concerns that I think everybody's probably readily aware of in terms of the travel speeds on College Ave. And we'll call that, in general, a traffic calming exercise. And you may be aware that there are any number of different tools in the tool belt that you can use to mitigate traffic speeds. For example, you can see the traffic circle at Raymond Avenue there on the right-hand side of that diagram. That's one kind of a traffic calming tool that can be used. We have very conceptually placed these colored bubbles on the street to sort of segment the street into a couple of different ways of treating the cross-section of the road, and the idea being that we want to create a little sense of friction, if you will. Right now, it's 37 or 38 feet wide, relatively und delineated and relatively flat, so that makes it a very wide-open and easy to negotiate at a higher speed than you should kind of a road. So first, I guess, first order of business is to note that between the Raymond Avenue traffic circle and the intersection of Park Road on the west is roughly 1,500 feet, so think of it in round terms as a quarter of a mile-ish kind of a space. And we've got the five different colors there relate to what we describe on the bottom as five different kinds of treatments. These aren't the only things available, but these are the ones that we felt were applicable. And basically, in the street section, there are a handful of components. You have a travel lane in each direction. You have the opportunity to put in parallel parking on one or both sides of the street. And then one other element that we're going to talk about here is the idea of a center island in selected location. We had, we recognize the significance of or the potential for bicycle traffic, and we discussed whether or not there were any measures that should be implemented at this point in time or included in here, and we felt like at 1,500 feet, it's only a very small portion of College Avenue, and frankly, at either east or western end, it doesn't link to other bike-friendly travel lanes or those kinds of specific improvements. So we have focused our time right now on the idea of reducing traffic speeds and increasing the need for a little more driver attention. So moving from right to left or east to west, you see the darker green envelope or bubble. That is basically, right now, what we're describing as a major boulevard island, and I don't mean major in terms of scale as much as trying to get the island in the center of the road large enough to be able to put meaningful landscape treatments like trees and other lower-growing plant material, but big enough to support tree growth. And that would not be unlike other big boulevards that you've seen. The idea would be that that boulevard would extend from the traffic circle over to the entrance to the Inn and Institute, and it would break there for an intersection, and at that point, the lighter green envelope is what we're calling a minor boulevard, which is a slightly narrower island in which we could do lower-level landscape, but it would continue to break the road down into a couple of narrower segments. For both of those areas, we would suggest that there be delineated parallel parking on the Inn and Institute side of the street, the north side of the street. And again, by delineated, we mean simply marked out, painted, designated, so that it is clearly not the travel lane, and it also results, can result in more efficient quantity of parking available because people are parking between designated stripes instead of on their own by intuition, which tends to be more inefficient because people give themselves more elbow room than they perhaps need. Beyond that, the blue bubble is, represents sort of what we call a standard street section, and that would be two travel lanes and parallel parking on both sides of the street. And the idea there being, obviously, it's located in between driveways, parking spaces, that is. But the idea is to get as much possible. We understand, you know, we've gotten the feedback already that it's important to maintain as much room for parking on the street as possible, so we've tried to make that as generous as we can and yet always accommodating people's driveways. The purple envelope represents the idea of a mid-block crossing. Again, because it's 1,500 feet down, if we don't have designated ways of getting across the street, chances are pretty good people will cross wherever they want. The idea of a crossing also gives us an opportunity to manipulate the width of the drive or width of the road to neck it down a little bit, not to reduce travel lane sizes but to bring the curb line in and have a crossing that could conceivably even be a raised crossing. Beyond that, to the west, we're talking about, again, the similar standard section of travel lanes and parallel parking on both sides of the street. Now, down at Park Avenue, is it Park Avenue? Park Road? I'll draw on a blank here. That presently is only a stop on the park side, not on the College Avenue side. So kind of the first thing we're thinking is that maybe it makes sense to mitigate that intersection by making it a three-way stop, which just gives cause for, again, reducing momentum down that stretch of the road. We could also start to manipulate curb lines there to choke that down, much in the way that you'll see in urban intersections when they're trying to green up an intersection and kind of control traffic. You can actually let those curb lines come out as corner islands. So that's sort of the fifth tool that we're talking about. None of these, based on the way I've described them, are things such as chicanes or lane shifts and those kinds of things. And the challenge with those kind of gestures are that they require lots of linear distance, and they will erode pretty substantially the available parking that you could have where you do have parallel parking. So we think these things create some friction as you work your way down the street, and we have a few slides after where we'll show you a little bit of an enlarged look at what those might look like. We could flip to the next slide, Brian.
Sounds good. Just a quick question. How many additional on-street parking places do you think can fit in there then between Park and Raymond?
I'll be honest with you. We haven't looked at it at a level of detail where we've run those numbers. You know, if you took that 550 feet and simply divided it by a 22 or 24 feet, you would get a larger number than we could actually accommodate based on driveway locations and such. So I just honestly, we haven't run that number to know. So that's something we'll certainly dig into. But the goal is to maximize, and practically speaking, it should be pretty equivalent to existing with the exception of in the zone of the boulevards where we are using that lane for an island instead of parking.
And I believe that the parking management plan presented did not include any of that on-street parking. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ben.
With the parking and the travel lanes and the islands, is the road wide enough for trucks to access also because you're going to have an inn with a restaurant, I believe, and everything?
Yeah, we will, and actually, when we get to the next slide, you'll see how we're sort of conceiving the intersection, but yes, we would have to accommodate inbound and outbound travel in both directions. So for example, here, you can see that the boulevard on the right ends substantially before the intersection, and then the next one doesn't start until afterwards. Ultimately, we would have to run vehicles through there to verify where the ends of those islands are, but the intent is to make that broad enough to accommodate that from either direction. The radiuses we show are, right now, standard, you know, 25 feet inside radius on those curves. Does that answer the question?
I think so.
Okay. So in this, this is sort of an enlargement of the intersection area at the institute inn, and you can see that, and again, this is sort of an approximation, that we're sort of right across from Dean's Lane. So we also, one of the values or benefits of ending the boulevard where we show it on the right is that it allows left-hand traffic or left-hand turning traffic into Dean's Lane and lets them back out as well. And so you can see in the sections below, on the right-hand side, we're showing that is an eight-foot-wide island, and it would have, that would be big enough that you could actually grow trees and other colorful landscaping in. So we think that, you know, is certainly an improved aesthetic at that end of the street. The left-hand section is for what shows the minor boulevard, and by minor, it's simply two feet narrower, so it would support smaller plant material, and from a visibility standpoint, we wouldn't want that to get too, too tall anyway. On the plan view, you can also see the parallel parking that's on the side, the north side of the street. One consideration we're giving here, and we just haven't shown it yet, is the idea of a crosswalk at this intersection to accommodate, you know, crossing at this intersection, which seems to make some great sense in terms of the sidewalks on either side of the street. So our general thought at this point is that it probably ends up on the west side of the intersection and possibly goes through the island so that we can have a cutout in the island, and the island actually acts as protection for people crossing the street. The diagram doesn't go far enough to show you, but the other end of that western island or the minor island would be short of the next driveways west of this intersection so that there's no one that needs to go through the boulevard or through the island in order to get to their driveway. So that will be roughly a 70-foot length, but it allows the houses at 160 and 162 to turn into their driveways and parking areas. And, oh, one thing I should have mentioned, all of these ideas that represent, in general, maintaining or improvements within what is the current roadway width, it's generally about 37 feet more or less. We don't have hard survey yet, but the idea is that we probably need 38 feet to do these things. But more or less, that existing curb line would be what we would replicate with any new curbing, and that the shoulders and the walkways, the sidewalks in the right-of-way would be maintained as is, and that we would avoid any of our hard improvements with any conflicts with storm drains, utility poles, manholes, light poles, et cetera, so that this is really a street project and doesn't unfold into an infrastructure project, if you will. Any other questions before we move to the next slide?
Sounds good. Thanks.
Okay. This is just a little bit of imagery because I know when people think of a boulevard, they can think of a major traffic or major collector road kind of a situation or a commercial street of some kind, and the idea is that we want it to be very quiet and relatively simple, and the scale of these is consistent with the kind of thing that we're talking about here. And we think that the boulevard in the limited areas that we're talking about can be compatible with the residential character. Our intent would be that the curbing would be comparable to the existing curbing, which is a sloped asphalt curb with a granite curb or concrete curb to just, again, visually make it as quiet as possible.
Yeah, fire trucks generally don't like the granite curbs, so that's a good thing.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. Couldn't hear that.
Just saying, generally, granite curbs wind up with sharp edges for fire trucks and other vehicles, so.
Correct, and right. They're unforgiving, whereas the sloped asphalt will definitely be more forgiving.
I'd just interrupt you real quick, Henry. I met with Mike Welty and...
I, I met with Mike Welty and, uh, Mark Pfeifer on the street to talk through these preliminarily, just conceptually, just to make sure that we weren't, uh, going down a path that Mark wouldn't, uh, be able to work with as the town highway superintendent. And he was, uh, generally in, in agreement with the ideas that we've proposed. Uh, one of the subjects was just that, was the, uh, curbing and stuff to be consistent with what is there, which is currently a, an asphalt curb, uh, so that it maintains that same character of what is the, the neighborhood and the roadway that is there.
All right, thanks, Ken.
Yep.
Okay, Brian, you can move along one. Okay, at the, and again, where we showed it on that overall plan was just a general idea of roughly mid-block. Ultimately, we had to really zoom in there and determine where this crossing ought to go, but the idea would be that, uh, on the left and right, you've got the standard street section with travel lanes and parallel parking. But where we have that mid-block crossing, that we would either, you know, bring that curve out. So again, we create a little friction by visually narrowing the road, even though the travel lane stays the same. But we bring the, we bring the pedestrians closer to each other in terms of the crossing and reduce the actual crossing distance. So there's a couple of different things that are happening there. Visually, you can see that it's, it's narrower vertically. We would recommend that we elevate that crossing and have a speed table. It's not a speed hump, it's a much softer transition up and over. But it's enough of a change that you wouldn't, you know, fly through there at a high speed without, uh, regretting it the first time anyway. It also gives us cause to put pedestrian signage and markings on the pavement, um, and, uh, creates an intended place for people to cross. So we think, you know, that could be done, you know, with striping or striping and curbing. But, but the main effort is to, uh, make it visible and designated. And if you go to the next slide, Brian, it's actually the same image, but the thing we were trying to point out with this is that the blues, the blue box sort of represents what we call the typical street section, which is two travel lanes and the parallel parking. And, and again, that will be situational because there will be a driveway opening here and there that we have to accommodate. So, uh, as the diagram, we showed it nice and neat, but there may be missing teeth in here in terms of allowing people to get into their properties. We can go one more. And at the intersection, um, this would be, what you see in the plan below, we'd implement the stopping measures on College Avenue, so both sides of the intersection would stop, have a stop bar, stop signage and, uh, a crosswalk. In this case, it, we would recommend being in the intersection, that it would be an on-grade crossing, so you'd have a ramp on either side. But it again provides a good, clean, designated way to get across the street. But it reduces the width of that intersection down to 24 feet, which is a normal full roadway cross-section without any parking on it. But again, it provides some resistance to, you know, unmitigated speed and unmitigated travel. So, and again, in the cross-section, you see stop sign, the curb ramps, and you get, you can see from the two gentlemen that we have in that cross-section or on either side on the, the existing sidewalks. So we think there can be some measures there and, and all told, all of those combined, you know, each adds to the level of attention that's required to drive in this block. If there is practically no, you know, hard physical resistance to make it an unusable street, it just, uh, requires that people be more obedient to the traffic controls that are there. So again, there are other tools, these that we think are the appropriate kinds of tools. They can happen independently or they can happen as a group or they can happen as, in an à la Cartway. But really, this is just our first, first take at it and obviously does not reflect a collaboration with town staff, engineering and highway i- in detail. But we think it's, it's, it's a good prime of the pump in terms of the conversation. So. There are questions on the subject.
I'd just say that it looks good overall because I, I think that's been one of the complaints of the neighbors, that the traffic gets pretty fast on that road.
Right. And so we've already, we've already, you know, gotten that feedback directly, in fact, about parking and speed. And so we've, we've heard that things, we've started to account for it even in this diagram, but, but certainly would look forward to accounting for it even in more detail as we move forward.
About how wide is that, uh, are you thinking the proposed boulevard island is? Is that like 10 feet or something?
It's an eight-foot wide island at the major boulevard. So, um, and that might, and, and again, all of these numbers for the widths that we show, I think are subject to, you know, critical conversation. In this case, with a 38-foot wide overall width to get the eight feet, you have 11-foot lanes for that section. Once you go through the intersection, it opens up to 12-foot wide lanes and a six-foot island. But I think all of those numbers would be things that we'd have to, you know, have a critical conversation with, you know, highway about and planning.
Yeah, I like the idea, accommodate some trees, it's wide enough for that.
Yeah, I think conceptually, when, as Ken alluded, we, when we were out there with Mark Pfeifer just to look at it, I mean, first of all, you don't have to stand out there very long to see cars going much faster than the speed limit. But, uh, the, uh, you know, I think conceptually, he, he, he was in favor of, of these kinds of, um, you know, design ideas, his ways to help, you know, give drivers the idea that they need to slow down and, and to make it a safer street all, all around. And, and, you know, obviously he's also concerned with, uh, maintenance and with the snow removal and those types of things. So I, I bet, um, you know, it was good to have that kind of discussion even early on. So if this is something that ultimately gets incorporated into the site plan, we'll obviously, we'll, we'll bring him in in more detail again.
I mean, it'd be great to get numbers eventually, but I'd like the idea of adding all the additional on-street parking that's not counted in the plan because that, you know, allows more people to, to use, you know, that are using the restaurant there or whatever to, or even visitors to, to houses there, et cetera, to use those parking spaces.
My only concern is this, this seems like this is, this is going to congest this street more by adding things in the middle like that. Did you guys talk to the residents, they want this on the street?
We did have, we have had dialogue and I'm sure there will be more. Where these boulevards are, there, there are no driveways on the south side of the street. There's Dean's Lane is the first left-hand turn. And then beyond the Minor Boulevard is where you have the next driveways on the left. So in terms of their direct turning movements, I think we could readily accommodate that. There had been some conversation, we, in fact, earlier today, we had discussed a longer boulevard, but we've since understood that we need to reel that in a little bit to avoid some hardships there.
Yeah, absolutely. You have a lot of driveways there, you have people that already park on the street. And I think that was the problem that we initially had with this, was that you have a lot of people already parking on the street and then you're going to add to that with this institute and this hotel. So adding more things to the street like islands, I just think that's really going to constrict it. I'm not opposed to the whole thing. I definitely think that there should be a three-way stop at Park Ave and College Ave. I feel like that should have been there a long time ago. But some of these things I think you have to be careful with because you want to put that parking on there for that hotel and institute, you already have people parking on there that live there in those houses and whatnot. So, I don't know, that, that's my two cents.
I'd just say, Nicole, that putting you, by striping it all, that helps organize the parking so it's more efficiently used and, and more cars can fit in that way.
You just have this nice, beautiful, wide road right now. That, that's my only concern. I don't think, you, you have to be careful not to constrict the movement is what I'm trying to say. That's all.
Yep.
Nicole, just to interject there too, part of our concept and thought behind it was a little bit of the constriction because of the speed. It'll make it a better travel way for pedestrians and, and people using it. I, I don't, I've parked on it and when you park on it, because they're so fast, you tend to want to park over the curb so that you can actually get out of your car and not get clipped by the guy driving down the road at 50 miles an hour. So the idea by putting striping on it, just like on Raymond, um, having those designated spaces, it slows the vehicles down a little bit. It doesn't stop the movement of vehicles where, as Henry pointed out, we're not going to restrict anyone's driveways going in and out. We're not looking to do any of that. All we're looking to do is kind of make it feel smaller so that people slow down. And then create a little more organized parking to add some space along those side streets. I hope that helps a little bit more clarity.
Yeah, a little paint, uh, helps, helps visually narrow it in people's minds as they're driving by.
Yeah. Well, as I said before, right now, there's no doubt people are flying down that road and, and you have every incentive to do so because it is so wide and, and there's really very little traffic there. So this would be, uh, one way to mitigate against that.
I've got a couple of questions, if I can ask.
Yep, yep, sure, go ahead, Bob.
I just want to get straight in my mind, the islands are, where they're going to be along, uh, College Avenue, are there any driveways that would be, when they come out, they hit the island? Or do they always have a way to come out of the driveway and go left or right depending on where they want to go?
No, there, yeah, there will be no, for example, in either of these green boxes, there are no driveways that come out into the island itself and the island on the left will end before the first driveway.
Okay.
So, so from, from here to the right up to Raymond, there are no other curb cuts other than Dean's Lane.
And these, um, I forget what you called them, they're, uh, not fully grown speed bumps, but some kind of.
Right, right.
You know, sort of a hint of, uh, slowing down. Is that, um, going to impact the clearing of the roads when it snows?
Generally, these, the, the distance over which you slope up and slope back down is variable and it can be anywhere from six to 10 feet. So that's fairly soft in terms of the break. It should be readily plowable and, and it won't, you, you won't pull it up or rip it off as you might a speed bump that is shorter and more abrupt. I think, Ken, you had some.
And Bob, when we talked to Mark Pfeifer about that, that was exactly one of his, uh, comments was, you know, we just have to work with him on the design to make sure it's not an abrupt change in the elevation so that his plows get hung up on it. And that it's more of a gradual change up, like Henry's describing, more like almost a raised crosswalk feel. It's going to come up to where they cross and then go back down, but what it does do is, is for vehicles, slow it down, um, but it should not impact him with regard to his plowing and maintenance in that regard. Okay, thanks.
That was a good idea, not, not as abrupt as like the Oakwood Common.
Right, right. Yeah, no, that, I would say of all those items on, that were mentioned, that was the one that, uh, Mark, I think, probably had the, you know, most question about and, and I, I'm sure, you know, again, this is, uh, I believe, Ken, that, you know, this is meant to be conceptual at this point and something that would be evaluated, you know, in more detail if this were included in their site plan.
Yeah, I'm not sure where it was, but I had, I do believe I've driven on something like that where you, where you slope up to it.
Yeah.
And back down, it's, it's over, it is over long distance, so just have to work that out.
Yeah.
The engineering.
This is Marianne, I just wanted to add two things, if I may, on, um, you know, a couple of points that were made, uh, just to reiterate what Henry said about the length of that light green box. Some, some individuals who I think might be on the Zoom have seen it in which that was a much longer green length and that has been shortened based on the input from residents. So that 70-foot section is significantly shorter than it was originally. So this is really iteration two already on these diagrams. So I just wanted to point it, point that out in case people were, you know, confused about the change. Um, I also wanted to just note, um, something about the plantings in the islands, which I know for some are just a, um, maintenance nightmare, but they also add a layer of greenery between the north and the south side of the street. And although we have street trees planted, um, on the south side, you know, to some degree now, and there are, there will be plantings along this, the side with the, um, the inn there, this added layer of greenery and shrubbery in the middle of the street will really add a nice, uh, layering effect from north to south and also can add color at various times of year, so, and shade, et cetera. So it's really an opportunity to, I think, create a much more, uh, natural-looking street and also a more, more pleasant residential, uh, feel.
Marianne, can I ask a question?
Sure.
About the greenery, would Vassar be maintaining that greenery? They do such a great job with what they do now.
You know, I'd have to turn to Brian to answer that for, for real because it's his staff that have to do that, but.
Yeah.
My understanding is that we would be maintaining this as we do the, um, the, along Raymond Avenue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, that's right, we, Vassar would maintain that.
That, that was a discussion with Mark as well and, and we.
Yes, it was.
Talking through that, uh, maintenance on the, on the boulevard area. I wanted to just have Brian go back to this because I know this question had come up. As you can see, the break between the dark green and light green, that is actually the first driveway on Raymond Avenue. And that's the first break in the island. So there's nobody that has to make a U-turn to get to their driveway, there, no one has to make any turning movements other than, if you're coming from Vassar and you were going into your driveway, if you're the first house, you'd be able to go after that light green section, make a left into your drive. If you're going into Dean's Lane and any one of the houses that are accessed from Dean's Lane, you'd be able to make the left right into Dean's Lane in that direction as well.
Yeah, we don't want to cause any artificial blockages of, of driveways.
Correct.
All right, thanks.
So before we go on, I, just a quick, we've, I think I've heard a little bit of mixed feedback and just so that we're all on the same page as we go into this, is this something that the planning board finds valuable as an addition to the way we think about the project or, um, don't bother spending your time on that, we'd like to talk about other things. You know, because this is intended to be a benefit to the community more so than the project and, and it, I mean, obviously making this road nicer is, is a benefit for everyone, but just wanted to get some kind of clearer feedback on whether we should continue to enhance this and move forward with these ideas.
I, for one, I like it, um, but I am curious to hear the community feedback at the public hearing. I think that it does, um, aesthetically, I think it helps and also I think it sort of softens the appearance of the inn if it can be, you know, if that, there's trees in the, in the island, I, I like it. So that's my feedback.
Thank you.
Any other board members have comments?
This is Rocco speaking. Uh, I think have to echo what Joan had said, has said, but I also, uh, am a little, uh, concerned with the points that, that Nicole brought up. I think, uh, we need, uh, the, uh, the community feedback. I like their approach here because I think it would add a lot of value, uh, and, and obviously a lot of, of aesthetics, uh, to that area. But the community feedback would be crucial. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rocco. Yep, and I, as I've said personally, I like the beautification of it, the additional landscaping, as, as Joan mentioned, will, will soften, the trees especially will soften the view from those, of the inn from those houses. And the, uh, the extra parking, as I've mentioned, uh, strip, striping the parking to be more efficient, uh, utilized will, uh, be a plus. Anyone else on the, on the street plan before we move on? All right, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we're going to move here to, um, a topic that I know some of you have heard about and, and, um, others probably have not, but the question comes up, you know, frequently about what, what the college is planning for the north side of campus and why in, uh, this project hasn't been located there. And I just wanted to share with you what our strategic direction is and our ideas for that, that north edge. And so this is really a conversation about our. And so this is really a conversation about our offices of admission and career education. So uh, next bullet, please. Um, who's, yeah, thank you. So um, the offices of admission and career education were identified as um key priorities, investors priority and planning process. This was a process that we went to, went through about, I would say, two and a half years ago. Um, but it's not, it, these, these offices have not been um discussed, discussed only since then. Um, certainly back in two thousand and fourteen, when we hired a consultant to undertake a set of uh campus planning studies for the college. Uh, he, he noted that the office of admissions was in the wrong building and in the wrong place on campus. Um, since that time, we've been evaluating and discussing a variety of solutions for how we might so better support the offices of admission and career education. Um, and ultimately, next bullet, please. Um, the college had decided that the most effective solution is really to combine these two offices, which are now separated on campus, into a single new building on the north edge of the campus, and I'll show you that on the next slide. Um, or maybe the one after. So why the north edge of campus, uh, you might be asking yourself, what's special about that location? And we uh truly believe that the north edge pro- provides us with real opportunity for both of these functions. First of all, there's available parking on the north edge in the form of the north lot, which is our visitor's parking lot. And there's enough space to expand that lot and add additional parking in that area. Uh, furthermore, um, it's an easy to find location. It's close to the edge of campus rather than buried in central pa- campus as these two functions currently are. And in addition, there's an opportunity at this location to create a gracious entry by rethinking that parking and rethinking the circulation of roads and pathways on the uh campus side. And in addition, we can reimagine the college's relationship to the community. At this point in time, that edge feels very much like a back of the campus. It's the back of uh Jewett House, which is one of our residence halls. It's the back of Jocelyn, which again is another residence hall. By really, um, you know, thinking about a new building in this location, we have an opportunity to, in many ways, create a new front to the campus. And that's the intention with this um project here. Um, next, please. And likewise, it activates the nor- north edge of campus. We are bringing visitors to this area, visitors close to Arlington, um, that will not feel like a back anymore, but feel very much like an intentional edge with the neighboring community on College View. And of course, with, there is a synergy with the Arlington Business District, and I'll talk about that more in a minute. But again, bringing visitors to campus in this location close to Arlington, there's a natural synergy there. So here's a map of campus just to orient you. The Raymond Avenue is, you can identify down the left-hand side. College View is on the the top of the screen. Um, our admissions office is currently located in the red square there, right behind main building. You can see that's far from most parking. It's also very difficult for visitors to find. If you've ever tried to do it yourself, you've probably gone in a few circles before you've gotten there. Um, the career education or career development, as we sometimes call it, is currently located in the first floor of main building in that red rectangle there. And this yellow circle is where we are planning, you know, generally to locate our new structure. So on the north edge, um, closer to um the functions in that area. As I mentioned, it's close to the north lot, which you can see here. Um, that's the north parking lot, and again, there's room for expansion in that area. It's also close to the north gate of campus, which is a major entrance and exit to the campus um right now. As you all know, the main gate itself is one-way in, and so it, you can't exit onto Raymond through main gate. And this um exit entrance here on College View tends to be a very heavily used um entrance and exit to the campus. Um, so this location is also close to college dining, as you can see here. This is our dining hall, our Gordon Commons. So visitors who come to admissions, prospective students and their families, um, can go straight over and get a bite before their campus tour. Um, folks who are coming to the career education center, maybe these are potential employers likewise could go to Gordon Commons for a meal. Or if they wanted to, they could go into Arlington and get a cup of coffee, which is right up there on the corner. Um, get another uh bite to eat if they're still hungry, whatever it happens to be. And likewise, it's fairly close to the institute and in, which um is a place where some people might be planning to stay while they're visiting the college or while they're trying to hire somebody for their firm. So that's kind of the idea. This build, this building site, um, again, is is something that we've identified as, you know, really solving the the problems that we currently have with the career education and admissions um located where they are now on campus. And enhances not only their ability to do the work that they need to do so well and be an inviting um entrance to the campus, but I think will also enhance that streetscape and that connection with the the local community and the local businesses. So on the next slide, I show, um, oh, before we get there, I forgot, I'm sorry. Um, one of the questions that might be on your mind as um planning board members is the impact on institute parking. Because you'll recall that our overflow parking had a solution in which the um, the overflow parking would take place on a grassy field um in this general area of campus that we're talking about. We are completely committed to um honoring the letter of any agreement with the town around overflow parking. And I think as you'll recall, recall, we had another solution which included the south lot um overflow area as well. And so we will um be evaluating um this potential impact. But we are, um, as I say, fully committed to honoring the agreement that we make for overflow parking. And um, I think you can move on. Yeah, Brian, you're up next, but maybe we want to take a break and answer any questions at this point?
Really quick, I just had a quick question for you, would you be taking down the tennis courts?
The the um idea right now, so right now, we have thirteen tennis courts there. Uh, six of those courts are varsity courts, they're not open to the public. And seven of them are actually open to the general Vassar community as well as to the public. Our idea is that we want to uh relocate the varsity tennis uh function to um be closer to what is currently our um athletic and fitness center. But maintain some tennis courts in this area because they are an amenity that the public is um used to using and we feel is is valuable in that location.
So when you say move, would you be moving it back towards like the pool? And the golf course, that area?
That would be the idea, we would have tennis courts up in that area instead. That's the general idea. And and right here, it's it's really un, um, it's an unhappy si- situation sometimes for visiting teams and for our own players. There's no showers, there's no bathroom, there's no, you know, place to get really a good uh drink water and stuff like that. So being closer to our other, there's not a place for an athletic trainer and that kind of thing. So being closer to the other. Yeah.
Yeah, because in your, where the pool is, there's bathrooms, there's.
Exactly.
Everything's up there, okay, yeah, no, that makes sense, okay.
Mary Ann, could you break down again the number of tennis courts that you anticipate moving versus the ones you anticipate leaving in place?
I hate to use firm numbers and I hate to use the term.
I understand.
Yeah, I hate to use the term move because obviously we're not picking them up and moving. And um, but currently in this location, we have a total of thirteen courts. And six of those are varsity courts and seven are, um, you know, open courts for general recreational use. So we would uh probably leave at least, you know, I don't, I want to say, but we could leave anywhere from, say, four or and up in this location. And it really depends on the site plan for this project and how we connect paths and so forth in the parking to uh what's around it. So we haven't gone through any kind of, you know, even preliminary design yet for it, so.
So you don't know how many square feet the building would be, the new building?
We, we've done an internal programmatic analysis, but we haven't done a detailed uh program analysis for that. So right now, we, roughly, we believe it will be about a twenty thousand gross square foot building.
Would that be on one floor or two floors?
The cu- the current idea is that it would be two floors.
Okay, so have a.
Again, we haven't, we haven't designed it yet.
Okay, thank you.
The location of that building, the only access to it is down College View Avenue, and I think, is it Fairmont, the other one coming in?
Yes.
Those are, well, especially College View is very busy now. Seven days a week, all day long. This is gonna increase the trips quite a bit and traffic flow. It is, anything being considered to help with that? Because that's a very busy street now. Uh, it's only gonna get more congested.
Yeah, I mean, I I think we have to do the detailed um study and evaluation around traffic in this area. Uh, one thing, and and we are completely committed to um taking that on if that's, that's a concern. One, one thing I just would note about this is that we do not anticipate that will, it will increase the number of visitors to campus. So currently, we have, you know, visitors, the the number of visitors that we have per year, you know, just having this new building isn't going to increase that number. But um, and so it's not really increasing traffic flow into the campus. Um, and many of our visitors park in that north edge already as it is because we don't have parking in the center of campus. So it's it's uncertain as to how this will change traffic flow. And I do think it is something that we um have to investigate more fully if we care to understand the answer to that question.
Mary Ann, can I ask a question? I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, um, Rocco. When you invite, say you know someone's coming to campus either to go to admissions or wherever, do you invite them to come through a particular entrance of the campus? Like currently, would it be main, the main entrance if they're gonna be, you know, is there any communication like that to potential visitors?
I'm su- I'm sure people have different ways that they describe getting to campus at this point in time. Um, many, you know, there are first-time visitors who love to come through the main gate. And that is that, you know, real aha moment. And in many ways, we don't want to lose that, you know, that prospective student who comes through main gate. And for some people, seeing main building laid out in front of you is like, I'm coming to this school, you know? And we don't want to lose that. So, you know, even with this building um located on the north edge, it's very likely that people will still be coming through the main gate. But through directional signage, it's still much easier, it's a much easier location to have admissions near parking there. Right now, what happens is people come in through the main gate, they look for admissions, they find the building for admissions, but there's no place to park. And so then they go hunting for parking. By the time they find their parking spot at the north lot, they walk back to admissions, they're late for their session. Oh, and then wait, their session is actually being held in another building because the current admissions building is too small.
Right.
So it's just a, not a very inviting and um gracious way to.
Right, yeah, and and my point being that if they continue to come in the way they have been coming in, it may not result in increased traffic down College View. Because I understand your point that there's no net increase expected by relocating these existing offices. Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder, real quick, it, you know, this is really early on still too. I mean, as we develop the plan itself, the building and all that, traffic will be done at that point, and we'll do the full studies. And we'll be back before you guys to have a more detailed discussion of this as we really get into the meat of of a design and concept. This is still very early on in the planning stages at Vassar.
I appreciate you sharing this with us so we have an idea why you say you couldn't move the in to that area. Because, you know, you know, you don't have an application in to us yet for this, but but you've, you've obviously given it quite a bit of thought already. Uh, I had a question, Kent, or whoever can answer, I see the two red arrows there on the top, is that some kind of alignment thing going on or?
That's the existing gate, I think, isn't it?
Yes, that's the existing gate.
That's just, okay, that's just, I'm trying to picture where Fairmont Avenue is versus.
Fairmont is right to the left of that, um, you can see it's not, it's uh not shaded, it's in white with just the outline right there.
Okay, got it, yeah, that's, okay. All right, thanks. Anyone on the board have some questions, additional questions and comments on this?
Is there any new news on the in and institute? Any changes, anything that this workshop should address?
Um, I think the next topic we wanted to bring up was the uh, the zoning, so do we want to talk through that? Brian?
Actually, before we go on, I'm gonna flip back a few pages. We didn't actually ask for feedback on the updated parking, and so that was one of the kind of bigger changes related to the project. So apologize as I scan back through, and maybe we can get a little bit of feedback of whether you uh all believe this is uh an improvement in the way that the parking is laid out and the way that it is aligned, the two streets here, and pulled the parking away from the nearby neighbor houses. Um, and whether this, like I said, whether this is valuable and we should continue to enhance it and get into the details of it, or if you like the other version better.
I think I like this version better, definitely.
I agree.
Uh, this is Rocco, I got a couple of questions about that. Uh, in your previous plan, you had the significant use of valet parking, is that still the case there?
It is, it'll be on this lower level where a lot of that would end up taking place in this version. So it still meets the full parking plan that we submitted.
Okay, and one of the comments I had regarding valet was whether or not it would, it would be available both to people who uh shop at the farmer's market when that's in session. And the answer I thought I'd heard at that time was yes, is that still the case?
Yeah, when the farmer's market is in session, there will be valet here.
Okay, and and is there, uh, this ties into, I don't know if you're gonna speak about that, but I, I, about this, but I do recall that uh you had some funds set aside to promote or to advertise the farmer's market uh over a period of time, is that, is that still in place?
Yeah, part of the conversation of the town is some funds allocated towards um, I, parks and recreation is, I can't think of the exact name of the group. So that they can promote activities here, yes.
Well, what I was getting to is uh, I I was looking for an appropriate the way to uh get the word out to the public that the valet parking would be available to them. And whether or not that would be an appropriate way to do that. Or or whether you could have a a separate campaign? Because I I know the uh, that the farmer's market's got a limited time span, uh, and and hopefully it will grow over time. And with with your, with the promotional activities which you guys have planned, that might uh help but to make that happen. And then you get more people and there would be more need for the valet parking. I I know, I know it's only in place for a year, and then you're going to reevaluate it, if I remember correctly, what was said.
Yes, right.
So I would think that that would be, in my mind, that that would be uh, an important thing to let the uh, the public know that that is available to them. And and then how do you get the other word out? So uh, to answer sort of first part of question, I like this plan better. Uh, and and then my other comments with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Rocco. Yeah, I like this parking plan better as well, the fact that it's further from the neighborhood, it gives you opportunity for additional landscaping there as well. And valet parking's, you know, closer into the, to the in as well, and further from residential.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments on the parking?
Before we leave here, um, I know just before this was when you talked about the open space, uh, Brian. So you, um, so it sounds like the college is committed to working with us on some type of a whether it's an easement or, you know, some mechanism for ensuring that that then becomes, uh, remains open space uh available for the community, you know, kind of the way it has been. Um, but is that uh correct to say?
That's right.
Yeah.
Mike, it's, Mike, it's Peter Wise.
Hey, Peter, how you doing?
Uh, I think, I think the simple answer is, Mike, that we'll probably do for this the same kind of thing that we did for the great lawn at Hudson Heritage, which is to work with you on a, on an appropriate uh declaration of restrictive covenants and then record that uh instrument in the county clerk's office.
Okay, okay, great.
Thank you.
Any comments from board members on that, on the lawn preservation?
Um, I'll, I'll speak up, I think I really appreciate it. I recognize that it's a a big concession on the part of the college, and I really appreciate that offer, so. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, I second that.
Yeah, this is Rocco, uh, I agree with that entirely, thank you.
Yeah, I agree as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like yeah, everybody everybody appreciates that because that, you know, that was a definitely a an issue that people were concerned about it being built upon further and then pushing the farmer's market out somewhere else. So having something available for the farmer's market uh forever there is a great thing. As well as just uh as a pseudo-community park.
It's gonna be a nice green really for Arlington. I mean, it's it's kind of the, you know, it's uh it becomes something that's actually formalized and as a as a public, you know, community shared space in in some fashion, which I think will be a great long term.
And just back to your proposal on the north edge of campus, I think that's a great door into the campus as well, as you said, because that if visitors are in that area, they're frequenting the the businesses in Arlington there as well as the your bookstore's there. It's uh everything seems to be on that one location for walkability and just moseying around to see things.
I just want to point out, we have about fifteen, twenty minutes uh remaining. We kind of had a hard stop because some people had to leave uh around six thirty. So I want to give, make sure that they have time to get to their last item.
Let's get to the zoning.
I think it's the last item. I don't know, Brian?
Unless the group brings something else up.
Okay.
Which we were happily happy to talk about.
Absolutely.
So uh the last being, this is the same text amendment that's been proposed because we didn't get a chance to really talk about it um in the meeting, get feedback from the board. Uh, we're proposing adding a new definition to the zoning code for conference university conference center or college university conference center. Uh, really for providing activities that are consistent with the educational mission for higher education institution and, you know, focus on educational activities. And it would then amend the zoning code to make this a permitted use in the institutional zone, subject to being on property owned by college and university. Uh, again, offering activities which are consistent with the educational mission, being within walking distance to a town center, a maximum number of rooms, and containing a restaurant that can be open to the public. So um, like I said, we didn't get really get a chance to talk about this at the last being, so wanted to provide an opportunity for feedback or questions if there are any.
May contain a restaurant, right? So yeah, don't want that to be a must.
I have a question. This may be for Lisa. Um, I have notes that say for this uh type of zoning change, we the secret analysis would require its impact on all educational institutions? Is that something that we would have to, like Marist, for example, would we then have to?
The the secret analysis would take into effect all of the properties in the institutional district that this would affect. So yes, the short answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Which is one of the reasons we talked about this as a type one seeker action, because otherwise it might be an unlisted action. But because it has the potential to affect lands that are more than twenty-five acres, it needs to be classified as a type one.
And and some of these restrictions means it cannot be applied to any institutional area in the town. Only certain ones that meet these requirements.
I'm trying to remember, uh Brian, I don't know if you, uh I just don't have it in front of me, but it was the the use itself was going to be a permitted use or a special permitted use? Do we um, do you recall?
It's a special permitted use in that proposal.
Okay, I thought that's what I was thinking. I I remembered, but it's been a few months.
Yeah, so that would, that needs an additional planning board approval then for that.
Right. So one of the things that um the board will be considering is there will be conditions attached to it as a special use because, as you know, special uses are permitted generally, provided that the use meets whatever the criteria are that are set forth in the code. So for this example, one of the things that was, you know, it's talking about that it may have a restaurant, but it can have, for example, a maximum of sixty rooms. And there were, so there were size limitations on it. One of the other things that was worked through when this definition was arrived at was limiting it to a college slash university conference center so that we were not creating a use to allow just general conference centers and all the attendant issues that they may have in the institutional district. But this would be specifically tied to a college or university. And it also then eliminates the, you know, no secondary institutions, high schools, other schools will do this and no other, it's strictly within this college/university setting.
Lisa, so like, um, for example, Oakwood, um, it would not apply to like a preparat- uh, I don't even know what Oakwood is, honestly, but um.
Right.
So this would not apply to that type of educational?
Right, it would not be a permitted use for that because the thought was, um, when the code section was being worked on, that it was not something that the town would want more broadly available. They think it's something that would benefit a college or university, but not necessarily the benefits to other educational institutions would not be outweighed by the potential detriment to the town by the added things. So the thought was to limit it to colleges or universities.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else ha- on the board have questions on the zoning text? I like that it's restrictive to to certain places, so that that gives us uh gives it more teeth.
So can I ask a question for, if this is the, if the review is going to extend out to all um college or uh institutional use, like for the seeker review, does that um, like for public notice for future, does that then kind of expand the field of folks who would be looking at this from the public's perspective? Like, does this then implicate like communities around Marist? Like, is it gonna sort of, I'm just curious as to how this could potentially unfold in terms of the review process and feedback from the public? Does that make sense, that question?
I'm sorry?
I just didn't know if that question even made sense. I'm just sort of thinking it aloud, I think.
Um, this has been listed in all of the public hearings as, I believe, as a change to this district, uh the institutional district, so that it is something that should be on everyone's radar. Um, and whether or not, um, you know, and I believe that we have information in our packets from Vassar at this point about um the im- the seeker impacts on that, because I think the scope of their seeker review provided some information for us about that.
Okay.
Um, that's my dog in the background.
Yeah.
That's not your stomach, Lisa.
If not, we will make sure that that is part of um a future review, so the board has all the information it needs in order to do a seeker determination about the global possibilities of this.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from board members on any topics they did not present tonight? Want to make sure that your questions are answered, because it's a workshop for for looking at this in an institute primarily?
I I have a question. Um, do we know what the status is of the new master plan? I have notes indicating, and I'm sure with COVID, everything's been slowed down dramatically. Um, but is there any updates on that, or is it still, you know?
Yeah.
It's not gonna be tomorrow, so really just focus on existing.
Right. Um, the 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 plan, uh, we do have a draft. Uh, we have been working through COVID. Um, actually, you know, made quite a lot of progress. We do have a draft of the plan uh that the committee has reviewed uh and provided some feedback to our consultants on. The consultants are, you know, revising and and, you know, cleaning up that document so that hopefully sometime after uh February, we'll be able to, you know, have something that the committee feels comfortable releasing out to the public. There'll be a public workshop. And then ultimately, it has to still go to the town board. So, you know, for for the formal adoption process. So, you know, I think a lot of the ideas you'll be able to see uh in the in in that document, you know, starting in 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 hopefully maybe March. Um, but again, the the document will not be the official plan for the town until I I, you know, I would say sometime this summer, maybe.
A long time. Well, the town has to have their own public hearings on it as well, once they.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. And then lastly, I have notes about um the topic of taxes for this property. I don't know if the applicant can speak to whether there's been any further conversations with the town about any agree agreements about the taxable status of the property.
Brian, you?
So this is Brian. I I can address that. We had uh some preliminary conversations with the town and and I think had a framework of how we might approach it. And then we were waiting for the planning board process to advance to finish that up. So um I think if if coming out of this, we have addressed a number of the concerns and questions that the planning board has, we will probably get back to that. Um, one of our questions before we leave is next step and whether we should resubmit with these changes and and then reopen the public hearing, or if there are other things that we should be spending time getting into.
Yeah, so I was trying to open it up if anyone, every, anyone has any other things that were not addressed tonight.
Members of the board.
Members of the board, yes. Not uh public.
I I have to say, Brian, you you guys did a great job. I like everything that I saw and I heard, except I have concerns about the constriction of that street. I understand I might be one of the only people that has concerns about that. And maybe, maybe the residents would like it to be like that. Um, I just, I I just don't want it to happen and then be in a situation where that um increases traffic and becomes a traffic problem. You know, we we want it to not be a problem. So I'm I'm just a little concerned about um what I saw tonight, that's all. Um, according to, you know, your uh your traffic.
Well, I think, you know, uh, so in terms of next steps, I think there's kind of two ways you could approach that, Brian. One would be, you know, obviously, it sounds like you've done a little bit of outreach um on the street. Um, and uh, you know, hopefully that's been helped, you know, it sounds like it's already informed some of what your thinking is. Uh, and uh, so maybe you would do a little more of that. That's up to you. Obviously, the the public hearing, our expectation would be the next time you come back, we would open the public hearing uh again. And and you know, that would also be an opportunity for people to provide some feedback. But I would, I I'm, I'm thinking you probably, you know, would want to have a little better sense of her how those things are going to be received. So that, you know, that's kind of, I kind of have to leave that up to you. Um, you know, I I do think overall, it's probably going to improve the quality of life for most people on that street to have the traffic slowed down and and the aesthetics improved. Um, but you know, I think people would probably want to know a little more detail. And so I think the outreach that you've been doing probably, you know, is a good way to go.
It it just, to me, seems a little bit of an overkill, that's all.
This is, this is Eric, and I'll just suggest, maybe for the next time or beyond that, um, there's a traffic analysis that's been on the books for a while. If the configuration of the road is changing, it might be worth having your consultant take a look at that analysis and address if there are going to be improvements made to the roadway, to have your consultant out of the box, address what those changes would mean mean with regard to the traffic analysis, which at the last point of view seem to be indicate adequacy of to see whether or not a a different configuration that is yet to be proposed has any effect on those results.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Yeah.
Well, if it slows traffic down, people won't have to leave their driveway at fifty miles an hour.
Yep. It, in general, when you, when you make a street, I mean, it's what we're trying to do to Main Street as well, is is a complete streets project and trying to make it more pedestrian friendly and slow traffic down a little bit. And that's kind of a similar idea here, here, I think, so. As well as provide some additional parking on street.
That's the goal. But as as Nicole pointed out, we don't want to do this if it's not helpful. So we will get a little more feedback on that to help refine it.
Yeah, need to have some buy-in there. Is there any other questions from board members on the Inn and Institute before they come back with another application?
Can I just um confirm with the applicant that at this point, you're not offering any changes to the design of the the structure?
Uh, not at this time. We did make some changes last time, and I think we can revisit the, you know, conversation around connection to the community and talk about, you know, if there's still disconnect on that.
Okay.
No one's here, but the air is still here.
Again, if you're uh on the Zoom, if you could mute yourself, please, that would be great. Thank you. So Brian or Ken, uh, is there anything else you need to, uh, questions you have for the board? I mean, it sounds like, I think we've had a pretty good dialogue uh around these ideas. Um, so I think it did get quite a bit of feedback, which is what the intent of tonight is.
In general, uh, in general, there's positive changes that I've saw throughout to the plan, so.
Yes, thank you very much. I mean, this has been very helpful. We'll, we'll start working on the document for the lawn. Um, you know, getting more detailed on the parking, get a little bit more feedback on the um, the traffic from the local community and refine that a bit more. Um, looking through my notes here. Uh, I think that was where the big hitters and what we talked about today, and for have that ready for the next uh application.
I didn't remember here, any, if anyone had any comments about, you know, the, they discussed the, the way they're preserving the history of Williams with some, with some walkthroughs and such. Did anyone have any questions or comments about that? Any board members? All right.
I did see that you, uh, I I did see John Pina recently in in Town Hall here, and he did mention that you've reached out. So appreciate that. Um, I think, you know, anything you can do to uh with them and partnership with them to, uh, you know, that would be, would be appreciated. Um, would be, would be helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Will do.
All right, thanks, everyone. I think we're coming up to a hard stop on time here.
All right. Thank you all. Really appreciate the time.
Brian?
Thanks, everyone.
Brian?
Have a good evening.
Brian?
Yeah, I'm listening.
Yeah, this is question totally unrelated to any of this, but are you, you have a relative named Ed Swarthup?
I don't, actually. I mean, maybe distantly, but not.